Good evening. If anybody wants to fill out a card to speak, it's over here on the right. A green card. Or fill out a card if you don't want to speak. If anybody wants to speak or fill out a green card over on the right-hand side, you can also fill out a card if you don't want to speak and are in favor or against a certain item. Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting of August ninth, 2023 will come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The secretary will call roll.
Commissioner Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy. Vice Chairperson Rice.
Here.
Chairperson Tolson.
Here. Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
A motion was made by Vice Chair Rice with a second by Commissioner Mann. Unless there are any objections, the agenda stands approved. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of June seventh, 2023?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Fantastic. A motion was made by Commissioner Mayor with a second by Vice Chair Rice. Unless there are any objections, the minutes are approved. The secretary will read the Declaration of Conflict.
If any member of the Planning Commission may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time.
Thank you very much. Are there any declarations of conflict? Hearing none, we'll proceed. Public statements, this is the time allotted for public statements or comments on all items other than public hearing items. So if it's on the agenda, that's other. Or are there any one in the chamber wishing to be heard for other items? Okay. This is the time and place set for a continued public hearing on the consideration of PD-S dash twenty twenty-one dash zero zero seven, zero 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 seven. Therefore, are there any ex parte communications to report?
Yes. Chairperson Tolson. I believe that approximately six months or before, I did have a very short phone call, less than a minute with Jerry Ross.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? May we have an oral report on this matter by staff?
Good evening, Chairman Tolson, members of the City Council. This is again a continuance of an item, a request for a plan development permit modification to install solar canopy structure and solar carports. Our associate planner, Elizabeth Richardson, will have the presentation.
Good evening. This is a continued public hearing for a modification to a planned development permit at Semi Country Mobile Home Estates. The project site is located within the Semi Country Mobile Home Estates, located at the end of Rory Lane, just east of the intersection of Yosemite Avenue and East Los Angeles Avenue. The project site is located in the mobile home zone and has a land use designation of mobile home. Construction of the solar carports began in 2020 with permits from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD. However, it was determined the HCD building permits had been issued without the required city zoning approval, and in April of 2021, HCD issued a stop work order and required the applicant to obtain a modification to the planned development permit. The applicant applied for the modification on November second, 2021. On May fourth, 2022, a public hearing was held by the Planning Commission. After receiving public testimony and the applicant's presentation, the Planning Commission continued the public hearing to a date uncertain for the applicant to meet with the neighborhood and refine the plans. Comments from the Planning Commission included that the trees proposed along the northern property line have potential for stunted growth and the overall landscaping and screening need improvements. The project has insufficient fire department access along the northern property line. There was concern with the proximity of the project to the neighbors to the north, including noise and screening of the structure from view. And they directed the applicant to meet with the Neighborhood Council and a series of meetings with the immediate neighbors. Since that May Planning Commission meeting in 2022, the applicant shared their project with Neighborhood Council Two on July twelfth, 2022, and they also met with the neighborhood immediately adjacent to the project site. The applicant team received their comments and refined the plans in response. The consensus reached between the applicant and neighbors were incorporated into the project refinements and include revised screening and landscaping and designing the project to have adequate fire access. To recap, the total installation area is thirty-six thousand two hundred and twelve square feet and includes the area near the Mobile Home Park clubhouse, as well as within the park's RV storage area. A total of one thousand one hundred and fifty-three solar panels will be installed to generate energy for the residents of the park. New landscaping is proposed in a five-foot-wide planting strip along the northern property line in the RV storage area, and there will be no loss in the total number of parking spaces for the park. The solar carport structures are located in two areas in the Mobile Home Park. The first area is a location by the clubhouse, where the carports and solar panels have already been constructed with permits issued from HCD. The second location is the Mobile Home Park's RV storage area. In this location, the structures are constructed, but the solar panels have not yet been installed. The solar carports will serve as support for the solar panels and will be one continuous structure in both locations. They will be constructed of steel posts and aluminum frame, and the solar panels will be mounted on top of the aluminum frame and will be painted jagged granite, which is consistent with the residential design guidelines. The photograph on the left is the completed solar carport structure that's constructed in the parking area by the Mobile Home Park. And the photograph on the right shows the solar carport structures that are constructed in the RV storage area. These structures are not yet complete, and this is the area of concern for the neighbors, and the project has been redesigned to include additional screening with both screen panels mounted on the top of the solar structure with vines to screen the project from the neighbors. In the RV storage area, the carports will be approximately six hundred and seventy-five feet long, with a width varying between fifteen feet and thirty feet. Fire lanes are provided with fire department access as required in conditions D two and D four. This will be accomplished by maintaining a clear fire lane from the property line and planter areas and can extend under the carports as long as a thirteen-feet-six-inch minimum height is maintained. In addition, the required screening trees will be planted inside the planter between the northern property line and the fire lanes. The carports will be oriented in a way to allow the solar panels to receive the most direct sunlight due to the angle and will have a height of sixteen feet at the high point of the structure on the right side, adjacent to the north property line, and fourteen feet at the low point on the left side, adjacent to the Arroyo. The height of the carports will still allow RVs and other recreation-style vehicles and trailers to be parked in this space. This section shows the carports at the location adjacent to the neighboring Mobile Home Park. In this location, laurels, nobilius, shrubs will be planted to provide landscaping and screen the carports. And this is a photo simulation of the solar structure as viewed from the neighboring Mobile Home Park and with the laurel shrubs at maturity. This section shows the solar structure in the location adjacent to the single-family residential neighbors. In this location, a laser-cut metal screen will be mounted on top of the structure, and evergreen vines will be planted to serve as landscaping and screening. And this is a photo simulation of the laser-cut panel and vines as viewed from the neighbor's property. The decorative panel and vines design was agreed to by the adjacent neighbors along with relocating the noise-producing devices of the solar panels away from the neighborhood. And staff recommends the Planning Commission approve PDS twenty twenty-one zero 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 seven with the conditions. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for questions.
Do we have any questions for staff? Any commissioner, questions for staff? Commissioner Mann? Oh. Okay. No questions for staff? We will open the public testimony portion of the hearing. We're gonna close the public testimony for a second. We need to have our city attorney talk with the applicant. So if the applicant can talk to our city attorney real quick? We have a question to ask? Thank you. So we have an interested party here in the audience that is doing some work for the applicant. And we have one of our commissioners also does some work with this same individual. So we're gonna have Commissioner Mann step away and excuse himself.
He's gonna recuse himself from this hearing.
Perfect, just for this matter. Great. Okay, now we're back open to public testimony portion of the hearing. I've got some cards. Would the applicant like to present the project? I've got Richard Dos. I've got James Yacera, Alan Brooks, Anthony Dispoto, Rick Sue, Kenneth Lynn. I'm not sure who wants to come and present.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for having us back again. I'm Richard Dos with...
Just state your name for the record.
Richard Dos, Pacific Coast Civil, three fifty-one Rolling Oaks Drive, Thousand Oaks. Oh, okay. Wow, that's pretty cool. All right. Well, anyway, thank you for having us again. It's been a while since we were before this board, this commission. And a lot has happened in that time. I think we have a whole different commission that we're dealing with at this time. So bear with me. So the project that we have presented is a solar array for the Semi Country Mobile Home Estates. And the goal of the whole thing was to provide reliable electricity to the Mobile Home Park, reduce the residents' power bills, increase the reliability of the community for times of stress, avoiding outages and so forth, which happen in the summertime in the heat, maintain stable rents for the residents of the Semi Country Mobile Home Estates, and create a six hundred and thirty-nine kilowatt system that can accomplish these things. So when we were before this commission back in May of 2022, there was a good deal of contentiousness in the presentation. And we opted to continue this hearing to now. But in the time since, at that Planning Commission meeting, we were advised to do two things. One was to reach out to the neighborhood at whole and then also to bring on a landscape architect to provide a proper landscape screening plan for the project. So we had consequently to that May fourth meeting, we had met with the Neighborhood Council in June of that year. And subsequently to that, we met with the neighbors in a open meeting at a different Mobile Home Park. That was attended by members of the Briarwood community. And I think nobody from the Crest Mobile Home Park, which is next door, arrived at that meeting, those two meetings. We were able to take a tour of the neighbor's properties to see the effect of the solar array on their view and on their private space. And we had several meetings and very positive meetings with Jerome Ross, who's the representative of the Briarwood people that are next door. And we've come to an agreement that everybody can live with with the landscaping that was proposed in those meetings. And we have Bob Bombardier from L. Newman Design Group here, who designed the unique landscape features that the community has been observing and that have been shown in your slideshow here. And we have a similar slideshow that we provided with the staff, but it's basically the same exhibits that you were shown already by Elizabeth. So anyway, it's all good. We've had a lot of contentiousness in the meetings, but at the end of the day, we were able to find areas of agreement. And I think the result will be a very, very nice answer to what was originally a really big problem for those neighbors. And anyway, the staff here are here from the constructor of the solar array. Also, Bob is here to kind of elaborate on his design for the landscape screening, which is very unique. And also, I think in our presentation, we also have structural details of the actual structure and how the panels are gonna be, these landscape panels are gonna be tied to it. That's in the package that we showed. But that's a little technical, maybe. We are planning to have the facility, all the planting will be installed with drip irrigation, and there will be a maintenance program from the owner to maintain the landscaping and the perpetuity per the conditions of this commission. And I think it should be very acceptable to everybody involved. So anyway, and I also like to thank staff, Elizabeth, and Sean, and Stratus. Have all been helpful. And we've been, as we've gone through this process of meeting with the neighbors and coming to agreements and, you know, coming to consensus on what is being built there and how it can help them and ameliorate the visual situation that they've got. So anyway, we're all here to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. Questions for the applicant?
I have one.
Vice Chair Rice.
You said that you met with Crest Mobile Home. What did you do for Crest Mobile Home?
We invited them to the meetings. None of the residents of the Crest Mobile Home attended at the meetings that we had.
Okay.
But we did talk to the owner of the Mobile Home Park, Crest Mobile Home Park. And he was okay with the solution that he came up with, but I was just informed before this meeting that he passed away before this meeting. So obviously, he can't be here to...
Okay. All right.
Perfect. Any other questions?
How mature are the trees that you're planting? How mature are the trees that you're planting?
I couldn't tell you that. I think Bob can better answer that for you.
Is there like any size, particular size that...
Let's get Bob up there. Bob, you wanna just introduce yourself and then answer that question?
Bob Bombardier, L. Newman Design Group, landscape architect, five seven four three Corsa Avenue, Westlake Village. The sizes of the shrubs that we're putting in are fifteen-gallon, and they meet criteria of the city, but they're only, they're four feet tall starting. And the columns that you see in the representation, they will grow pretty quick. Probably at that height, immediately start to screen probably within the year, a year and a half to get to the height that you're seeing in the picture. And the vines, we are putting them on the columns. We're putting two different kinds on the columns, but they're gonna be about ten feet tall starting, and they'll take about a year and a half to cross as well. But the whole purpose of the ornamental screen that we put in, which is more expensive than just the lattice screen, is that it looks good immediately as soon as they put it up. And as it grows, it'll look better and better and better and fill in. So.
Thank you. I have one more.
Go ahead.
You said that the system... You said that the system, the solar system that you're putting in is going to help reduce the power bill for the residents. Is that something that they're, they have to pay for, or is that being offered for free? Like, is that just going to reduce their bill?
Please, Ellen. Thank you.
Good evening, Alan Brower. I'm one of the original developers from Solar Wholesale Group, 4245 Massachusetts Street, Long Beach, California. Thanks for having us again. It's been a long and winding road. Very, we've had some big challenges, and I think we've met, met them to everybody's satisfaction. To answer your question regarding potential backup power, was that your question?
Well, I, I was just asking a question, how is that going to work out for the residents? Is that something that they're getting for free?
One of the, excuse me, one of the objectives that was on the, on your list was saving residents...
Reducing power bill.
Reducing, reducing power.
Absolutely. So, once a solar array or solar system's been installed, the power for that home, that mobile home park, that commercial project, is now being provided by the solar array itself. This protects the homeowner, the mobile home park owner, the residents of the mobile home park owner, from being subject to rate increases from the utility. I'm sure you've never seen a rate decrease from your utility, no matter where you live, 9.3% two years ago, 5% last year, et cetera. So that's going to continue. So this will subsidize, or this will stabilize the cost of power for the mobile home park, therefore, the mobile home park will not have to pass on rate increases to its residents as far as the power is concerned, keeping the affordable living model as affordable as possible. Forget about the clean aspect and the green aspect, and, but, you know, when you're making your own power, you are in more of control for your situation financially as well as your residents, so it's quite a protective veil for all the residents.
Thank you, and thank you. I, I got everybody up.
Just to clarify, just for me, a resident gets an invoice from the mobile park owner for their utilities?
Absolutely, through, they're sub-metered, and therefore, the park collects, so the park will not have to raise rates because the park will now be on a, for 20 years, basically, the park will be protected under the net metering 2 agreement, which is a very big deal, because we did get that hopefully under the wire. We did get that under the wire, so.
Thank, thank you very much. We have someone behind you maybe want to say something. Someone behind you?
I just, Jim and Sarah, I'm one of the managers at Semi Country Mobile Home Park. I just wanted to add to it, in 2024, right now, the federal government is going to be putting on a carbon footprint tax, which could be as high as 30%. The Energy Secretary Grahamholm, Jennifer Grahamholm, today was talking about that. With that carbon footprint tax for not having solar, but if we've got solar, every single one of our residents will not have to be paying the carbon footprint tax, because we will not have to be paying it. So, I mean, 2024, all of a sudden, your power bill goes up as much as 30%. I mean, it's a tremendous savings right off the bat, and as time goes on, the savings will be better and better and better, because this isn't going away, the green energy thing and what is going on right now at the federal level. They are screaming for solar power. Tomorrow night, or tomorrow afternoon, Southern California Edison again is going to be shutting the power off in that park to actually revamp something that they did last year incorrectly. They had a subcontractor come out there, do all this work that was supposed to be all concentric cabling, but the wrong cabling was installed. So now we're subjected to another power shutdown, eight to 10 hours, to redo this work again. And then at the end of the month, there's going to be another outage, because it's going to affect another area that they're going to be working on, which will be on the same tiebreaker. I spent 40 years in the high voltage industry, I'm a second generation of three generation of linemen. The power in the state of California is horrible at best. I'm, I'm really, really being serious with you. I mean, they're going through and repairing all the secondary wiring. We still got a tremendous amount of transmission cabling that has yet to be done. I mean, we've got years of this, and you can take it to heart, when you, 10 years from now, you'll be going, hey, that, that old gray-haired guy up there with the tattoos, he knew what he was talking about, believe me. I've been in the industry, I've done the same thing 16 times over and over and over and over again, because Edison's mistakes or DWP's mistakes. We can't rely on the utility...
Let's wrap it up, because we're talking about this project per se, as opposed to...
What I'm saying is, we cannot rely on the utility power. I mean, if you're sitting in their house in a mobile home and your power's going out again and again and again, and we haven't even hit the hot, hot part of the year yet, so, just it's the carbon footprint.
We've got one, one more follow-up question? Commissioner Mayor.
Is this system able to support the residents' needs? Because you were talking about being self-sufficient. How self-sufficient are you with this system?
Mr. Solar?
Sorry.
Alan Brower again. We have 100% offset of the kilowatt hours that this mobile home park has proved that they need over the last few years, so we build a system to customize their needs. Let me be real clear about a battery backup situation. I don't want there to be any misnomers there. Once we have this system installed, as it should have been two years ago, we could move to the next phase of the backup battery portion. That will allow us to have a cooling center, an electrical center, a battery charging center at the clubhouse. So only the backup batteries themselves will allow somebody to have some kind of safe space, cool space, lit space, which we don't have right now, not too many people have it. The state, the, the federal government actually just released $30 billion, I do believe, I'll have to look it up, for emergency cooling centers, clean energy cooling centers. That money, that has nothing to do with this, but that's how important it is to have people to have a safe place, a safe space, and we'll be able to provide, provide that once this phase of the solar installation is completed. As you well know, we only did 90 kilowatts next to the clubhouse, very permitted, signed off by the city, and approved by Southern California Edison, and we're just waiting for this next phase.
Thank you very much. Anything else you want to, any other questions? You done? Thank you very much. Okay, now we have some cards from the audience, non-applicants. I've got, let's see here, we're going to go in order of how they were presented. I've got Rick Ball wants to speak. Rick Ball. We're going to do five minutes each.
Is it possible to bring up slide BB?
Put the mic towards your mouth.
Is it possible to bring up the rendering BB? Primary section BB and rendering, this is the one that was in the handout.
Is that the one?
No.
Are you looking for the rendering, or are you looking for the, because this is a component of that section? You're looking for those? Okay. You're looking for these?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So if you go to, this is AA, if you go to the next slide, I believe. This is behind four of the homes, and I'm, I'm with the homeowners association representing the board of directors. So, we need to go to...
Yeah, I'm going to pull up the PDF of the plans.
Okay. Okay, great. So this is behind the detention basin, and there's a cutout in the detention basin that the flood control district insisted that they had cut out in the event that there's overrun on the storm drain and it goes out through there. Now, it's showing the, the, some kind of vegetation along the top decorative panels and one, and the, and the vertical. What is going to give us a sight screen of all this stuff below that decorative screen in the area?
We get him a pointer?
See, what's going to happen in here? Are there going to be vertical?
We need to have you step at the microphone, I'm sorry. We got a pointer here for you? Hopefully.
Along that decorative panel on the top, there is some kind of vegetation there, and then with a vertical post, is this vertical post going to be done all the way along here? This is the area that we wanted a sight screen, not just a little trim at the top. And, and the panel just says evergreen vines. So, are there going to be at each vertical post, is there going to be this, or are there plantings on the other side of the wall that will give us that visual screen that we had talked and requested?
We're, we're, this is a public portion, this is where you speak, we go through the order of all the cards, and then we go from there.
So, so that's from a homeowners association, that was our concern, to address that, and I don't see in these pictures where it's really addressed the visual screen, just that little thing across the top, which actually does, it blocks the beautiful view of the mountains, but not anything on the solar, really, so.
Mr. Moore, so you want to grab that thing? Any, anything else from you, sir?
No.
Thank you very much. David Griggs?
You have my name. Sorry. I'm in opposition to this because her question wasn't quite really asked. Were you going to pass on the, keep our rates the same while generating power for us? Do you understand what I'm saying? They're going to, they're going to generate power, but they're going to keep our rates the same. How is that saving us any money? That's my question. I mean, it's not going to, our, our bill's not going to go up, but it's going to remain the same with these solar panels. What good are they then? I'm not allowed to put solar panels on my house because I don't have a meter connected to the, to, to Southern California Edison, which is required by state law. My meter is 50 years old, or, or was designed in the 50s, and I am, Southern California Edison has two different types of meters. One that will, 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 the, the, the one, they have a smart meter where you don't need to be read every month, and it goes out and shows the current power consumption. Now, the park has one of these, and I'm charged two different rates, even though my power, or my, my meter only shows one area that cannot, cannot discern between peak and off-peak hours, and yet I'm charged two different rates. So these are my concerns. I, I, like I say, I, I don't think that they need to be setting up their own power company for us, when I can't set my own up for myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've got Bob Bombardier. Oh, thank you, Bob. Jerome Ross.
Here, I did print this out, one for each of you.
How many copies did you give us?
I, I didn't actually count them, but if you need a few more, I have extra, as if that's not enough. You need a few more?
We're good.
You're all good, okay. Good evening, planning commissioners, city staff and fellow residents. My name's Jerome Ross, and I'm the homeowner in the Briarwood residential community. I stand before you today, not just as a resident with a vested interest in the neighborhood's well-being, but as a testament to what can be achieved when parties come together in the spirit of collaboration and compromise. I'd like to begin by extending my sincere gratitude to the planning commission. Your decision to defer judgment during the May 22, 2022 meeting on the semi-country estate solar project demonstrated both your dedication to our community's concerns and your commitment to responsible development. Your due diligence in reviewing the project has, has granted us, the homeowners, a unique opportunity. It enabled us to engage in meaningful dialogue with the developers, discuss our concerns, and jointly explore potential solutions. This collaboration has borne, borne fruit in the form of a comprehensive landscaping solution, striking balance between the community's aesthetic aspirations and the broader goals of sustainable energy. However, before fully endorsing this project, I do have a concern to address. It's essential for the conditional use permit to stipulate long-term maintenance requirements. This will ensure that the landscaping, as depicted in this evening's staff report, is not only installed correctly, but also sustained over the long term. An aesthetically pleasing landscape today must remain so in the future. Furthermore, to hasten the screening of the solar carport structure, I would like to request the applicant use mature trees and vines. This would significantly reduce the waiting time for them to grow fully, ensuring the community enjoys the visual benefits sooner rather than later. In addition to these concerns, I'd like to request the extension of the Sweet Bay Hedge to cover the Briarwood Detention Basin border. That, that's the border that Rick Ball just showed you right here in that rendering right This extension would further enhance the visual appeal and the community, and the continuity of the green landscaping in our neighborhood. A series of community outreach efforts and public meetings organized by the developers have been instrumental in resolving our initial reservations. We've been presented with a clear vision of how the solar array will integrate with our neighborhood. I'm convinced that the measures put forth by Semi Country Estates address their residents' needs, and importantly, set a benchmark for future sustainable projects, demonstrating how they can be seamlessly incorporated into residential communities with the right planning, foresight, and engagement. In closing, I'd like to reiterate my support for the solar project at Semi Country Estates, provided our concerns about maintenance and maturity of the plants are adequately addressed. I'm confident this project, once completed, will stand as a testament to the power of community collaboration and the promise of sustainable living. Thank you for your consideration, your time, and for fostering an environment where community voices resonate, are acknowledged, and influence decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've got Christopher Alessi.
I've been a resident of Semi Country Estates for over 34 years now, and I'm right behind the wash, right where those solar panels are. I just, my comment, I'm just making a comment today. I just would like to see both sides come to an agreement, because the way, the way it's sitting right now, it's sort of an eyesore for us, but I know that Jimmy, one of the investors here, had good intentions on trying to save electric for the park, and that's a really great thing, and I also see the other side where the homeowners have their issues with the blocking of the view and everything, but I'm just hopeful that both sides can come to this agreement and we can get this thing over with and, and, and get on our way with what we need to do, get the solar panels up and have everybody pretty happy on each side. That's all I wanted to say. It's just been going on a long, long time, and I think we're ready to make something happen here.
Thank you very much.
That's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Wright?
I was told originally that I had to approach you tonight at the meeting for extra time. I called last week, the last meeting we had here at the planning commission. I was told that night that I should have called a week earlier, which I did, and I was told that I could not get that set ahead of time, that I had to ask you guys and the city attorney tonight if I could have that extra time.
So Victoria, how much time? So Victoria, how much time do you want?
I want enough time to be able to, to address what I need to address here. Cause you, you, you guys need the whole story before this decision.
20 minutes, an hour?
10 minutes is plenty, as more than enough probably, probably about six, seven minutes. But I know I'm gonna go over the five.
I believe the chair just extended the timeframe from three minutes to five minutes to the last one. So I would recommend that everybody be given the same amount of time and that would comply with all due process requirements. I think five, five minutes would be appropriate because otherwise you'd have to give.
So we're at five now is what they're at. We're gonna go to seven from now and anybody else, we're gonna go seven minutes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Can we restart the time? I'm sorry. Apologize.
I'm sorry, Chair. So that last person that spoke would be entitled to another two minutes.
Correct.
Okay. My first thing I want to say is the last time we were here, he was instructed to go to the neighborhood council and get their approval. It was denied by the neighborhood council. They don't want this. They don't like it. And the fear is, you know exactly what the fear is. It starts here and it just grows across the city. Nobody wants to look at a sheet of metal over everything. I understand what he's saying about solar power. I get it. But he's failing to tell you that the state of California right now offers a grant to put all of our homes on Southern California Edison and they refuse to fill out the paperwork. They were told about it two years ago. When we were first here, I told them the grant would be back open and I went and told the management of the park that the grant's back open. You know why? Cause he likes to charge us more for our power than we pay. I can't tell you what the Southern California Edison charges because it's never posted like it's supposed to be with the M R L, which is Mobile Home Residency Law says it must be posted where we can see it. If it's posted, it's inside the rec center, which is always deadbolted. They can't get in it. The cooling place he's talking about, I have kidney disease. I'm in four-stage renal failure. My air conditioning wasn't working the other day and I had to, the next day say something to Cliff to get the damn rec center open because it's not open like it used to be. That place was open every single day from nine until nine at night. It's no longer done that. All right? It is not done anymore since COVID. COVID took off, we're done with COVID. I got a thing from my union saying, oh, the state of California gave it up, finally, all the COVID restrictions. That place should have been open a year and a half ago, two years ago for us to go in there. It is not. It's only open for when they want private parties. And as it is, they rope off sections for parking that they're not supposed to. Nevertheless, this whole thing with the solar power, I want to know how we're all gonna get power. If I'm on dialysis, is my dialysis machine gonna work? Can he guarantee me that? Can he put it in writing that I'm gonna get everything he said and sign it? So it's a contract that I can take him to court on if he doesn't. They don't maintain our park now as it is. A tree fell on a house across the street, a limb broke off, or me, ruined their awning and almost hit their neighbor's grandchild in the morning. That tree was so overgrown and untaken care of, which by the way, in the M R L is their responsibility, not ours. It is the park's responsibility to maintain all maintenance of trees. I haven't seen a tree cutter in there in over three years. Do you know what oak trees, what happens to them when they're not trimmed properly? The branches break off and fall on people's homes and awnings. And I called the owner of the park and left him a message. This is the second time I've contacted him in one year about maintenance in our park. They can't maintain what they have now. How are they gonna maintain that beautiful piece, huh? They won't. Look at the blacktop of that RV. They haven't, I've been in that park since 1996. It's never been slurried since I moved in, not once. Not one slurry on it. Nothing. No maintenance whatsoever out there. As a matter of fact, there has been cuts in the fence that have been left for months for people to go in and break into our stuff. Everybody, most people have returned their stuff. I refused to put my stuff back in that RV storage because I had to sign a release that said if my vehicle gets, anything gets damaged, it's not their responsibility. My spot's here, here's a pallet of the top here, here's a pallet of those, those solar panels here and they're going like this. You think I'm gonna pull my stuff back in there? So for the last two, half, three years, I'm paying for locked storage that isn't locked. On top of it, this man wants to raise our cost out there because now we have covered storage. So he's getting the benefit of both worlds. I've lived in this city my whole life. I know the city's process. I have yet to see anybody overstep a neighborhood council and not let, not being, somebody being told to do something and not following what the city's told them to do. I mean, he's totally subvented what you guys said the last time. Never meeting with everybody that lived in the park, hell no. I can't even get to the rec center to have a homeowners meeting, to tell everybody how to put their house in living trust so he can't steal them when they die. They won't let me do that. This is consistently what we have to bash our heads against. Okay, he is in it for the money. I get it. I'm a capitalist all the way. Hey, I believe in every businessman having that right to make money. But he can't sit here and lie to you if he's gonna do it. If he wants to be a businessman, just be honest about it. Say, I want to make some money. You're allowed to do that as a businessman. Stop trying to hide and weasel behind electricity and all this other stuff. Okay, let's get it right. He has done things that most of the time, no, nobody in the city would have put up with. I can't believe we're back here without it going before the neighborhood council again. One of the men on the neighborhood council who's a contractor, do you know what he's told him? He said, well, you crossed your eyes and dotted your T, you crossed all your Ts and dotted your Is, but you forgot to talk to the people who lived around there to see if they were okay with it. And he voted against him, a contractor. He understands that city, the city values a little different. That's why people move here. That's why they love this place. We are not like Los Angeles. We don't just let things go in anywhere. We're very particular about what we do. Very strategic, almost like a surgeon when we do something in this town. And it needs to remain that way. My home value is nothing what it probably could be because the park is never maintained. Okay, I had to say something, like I said, nine months ago, I called the owner with a list, everything from three-foot-high stop signs. And literally mine broke and we had to zip tie it to the fence. It was like that for seven, eight months. Nobody was touching it while it was zip tied. We have fencing in the park that's busted and got duct tape around it. All that gets left so they can do this. Do you think that's right? Invest or not, you invest when your own is taken care of. Would you take and not take care of your house and invest in something to make money? No, you wouldn't. Your own home gets taken care of first. He's not taking care of his own home. When I did say something to Mark the owner, you know what he did? He slurried the streets where he thinks I drive. He doesn't realize I drive the whole frickin' park. I go from one end of the park to the other and look at all the problems. Because we have a manager that doesn't do it. Cliff's hands are tied. Cliff is not the manager. Jimmy holds the purse. So when Cliff knows something needs to be done, he can't get it done. This man has to okay it. And God help him on the Sunday when that tree fell, he couldn't be reached. I had to call the owner again. I shouldn't have to go through the owner. Mark should be left alone. But when we can't get a response from the park like we're supposed to, when we first asked about these solar panels, we were specifically told it was not for our benefit. Now it is. I worked at a Vons on Arringer that has battery backup. I know how much it takes to back that store up. Where the hell is he gonna put all those batteries to back that park up? There's not enough room. And he knows it. Like I said, is there gonna be enough room to run a dialysis machine that's not currently being used? Can he cover that cost? Can he guarantee me my machine won't shut off? I don't think he can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now what we're gonna do is we're gonna go back to those who already spoke to see if they would like an additional two minutes. You don't have to, you're not forced to, but you're being given that opportunity. Rick Ball, an additional two minutes. Thank you very much. That was a no. David Griggs, no additional two minutes. Thank you very much. Jerome Ross, no additional two minutes. Christopher Lessie, no additional two minutes. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna keep going here. We're, we're now at, back to seven. Christina Healy, does not wish to speak, but she's in opposition. We've got Janice Stone in opposition, does not wish to speak. We've got Clifford Howke in support, does not wish to speak. We got Lori Walker in support, does not wish to speak. We have Lynn Green in support, does not wish to speak. We've got David and Kelly Williams in support, does not wish to speak. And we have Monte Pettis in support, does not wish to speak. Is there any other green cards that did not get turned in? Are there any comments from staff regarding statements made during the public hearing?
Chairman, I think there's maybe possibly three or four items we're gonna mention regarding the questions that were asked and a couple of the requests from Mr. Ross's statement. So Principal Planner Padrosso is turning on her microphone.
Yes, in regards to the maintenance of the landscaping, condition C dash six is conditioning the applicant to maintain the landscaping for the lifetime of this permit. So that would address some of the concerns from some of the public. Also, in regards to the neighborhood council, the decision was not being able to, was not able to be reached. There was a, because of some of the absentees, absent, some people that were not present, some of the executive board that were not present, that's why they could not make a recommendation. In regards to the planting material in this particular section, B B, the plans showed that the vines are being planted at each post, but I would like to defer that to the applicant to respond to as to how that area is going to be screened. But right now, the plan showed that basically the vines go all the way across the, the hole. I think it's a balance about 300 feet or so. And if you, if you show the side plan, the landscape plan? Yeah, so if you can see to the right side of the, of the side plan, that's gonna be the vine material and it shows pretty continuous as you can see on the detail on the top, which is the large main one. And I, it's not showing any, any breaks, but again, the applicant may be able to address that item. And then to the second half to the left of that is that's where the shrubs are going to be planted at 15 feet on, I'm sorry, seven feet on center. And are there any other items?
The applicant may want, also want to respond to requests for mature trees and vines. If we want to respond to that comment from the other people, if that size is, as proposed, is sufficient.
Yeah, I would definitely defer that comment to the applicant to their best able to answer that.
Bob, of course. We're not there yet. We'll call you up when we're ready. We'll call you up when we're ready.
I believe that's all the items that we want to bring up right now.
Beautiful. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments regarding statements made during the public hearing? This is when the applicant comes up?
Bob, the landscape expert, will speak to the offset of the actual plants themselves. I could speak to a couple of the boxes that needed to be checked that the commissioner, I think there's a commissioner that's no longer here, was the gentleman that was, had the contractor's background. And he, he said he thought all the boxes were checked. However, you guys should really hit two more important boxes and come back and see us. And the two boxes were to meet with the neighbors, to try to come to a resolution that everybody's on the same page as Mr. Ross has attested to, that everybody's very satisfied with the setup as is. The other was to make sure that landscaping is in check. And that's, that's all part, I guess it's kind of one situation. So we've met that criteria. Of course, there's a couple more boxes that just came up with the basin. And we were under the impression that the, the neighbors wanted more of an open feel, more of an open area to not block that view in that area. We are ready, willing and able to landscape that area if that's what they want. It's that simple. If that's what was requested in the, by the neighbors and it'd be the neighborly thing to do. We've come this far, I would say. As far as, I'm gonna change gears before Bob steps in on the offset of the planting itself. There's concern from the residents over how they'll be protected, how they will be saving. They don't get that there will be a benefit. And I mentioned it earlier and I'll just say it again, so every, for everybody's benefit, that when you have your own solar array and you make your own solar power, whether you're a home, apartment building, mobile home park, et cetera, that meter, by the way, is a smart meter at Semi Country Mobile Home Park. That smart meter will get the benefit of the solar production. That freezing of rate increases will be passed on to the residents. Or should I say, the residents again, will be protected from those nasty rate increases and potential taxes that Jimmy was talking about, the green, the, the potential clean energy tax that will go into effect in 2024. So it's really a protective umbrella for residents to protect them from rate increases. I want to be clear about that. And lastly, there's a lot of stuff spoken about that was not solar related. So I'm only gonna stick to the solar stuff that I know of. And Jimmy may be able to speak to the other stuff if you guys are willing to hear it. But the cleaner and greener look is gonna happen. As soon as this thing is done, I mean, that, those posts are out there rusting away. It's not a good look. The loud noise has already happened, the construction, the hard and loud construction is done. As soon as we get a positive move forward vote, we'll get back on it and clean this thing up at the cost to the mobile home park. You know, no, no one's absorbing that cost. The mobile home park owner is investing in this clean energy. The mobile home park owner is investing in protecting its tenants from these rate increases. No one's coming out of pocket for that except for the, the owner of the mobile home park. So I'm trying to make dollars and cents of this for everybody and who's footing the bill for all this, including the extra expenses gone to and gone through by the mobile home park owner for the professional landscape architect, civil engineering design company and everybody else's time from the developers and the contractors. And you see a room of people here. Everyone's put a lot of time, thought, effort, and everyone's putting their best foot forward. And I think we've come to that place where, where we can get that, everybody on the same page.
Mr. Bob, landscape guy.
Yeah, we had an exhibit on the set as well that just showed the vines. But the vines are on every column against the wall. The other columns that you saw in the rendering were on the other side. So it looked like they weren't on all, but they were on every post. As Alan said, the owner is willing to meet the same criteria. And I was out there, I met with the homeowners. I thought I heard everything. There's no house by the basin. I tried to leave the, when you're down lower, you're actually looking at the mountain up underneath it. So I tried to screen the beams that were issues, not so much the views. But looking at the plan, we can continue the seven-foot-on-center Loris Nobles. I think the count would be about 20 to go across. The owner has no problem doing that. As far as the vines, we, we have two 15-gallon and one 24. Unfortunately, when you go buy 24-inch box vines, they're not readily available. The one that I did choose, I know is available. And so what I did is use that as the training vines, so the other vines would take off with it. 15-gallon Bogovilla and the 15-gallon Bauer vine are already bigger than most vines. So we do have mature vines already. So the only other upgrade would be try to go to the Loris Nobles in a box size. The owner's willing to entertain that. It's about another $20,000 just to upsize one size. So if you want to condition us, upsize, they're willing to do it. But all it's gonna, it's gonna go from a four-foot to about eight, maybe nine in height.
I think you're done?
What's, I'm, I think I'm done.
Thank you.
Is that a question? Okay, thank you.
Okay, here we go. If there are no further questions, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Are there any comments or questions from members of the planning commission? Commissioner Ray.
Yeah, here we go. I, I, I think I need more clarification on who's gonna be paying for this structure. Is it gonna be passed to the residents? Is, is this solar cost gonna be passed to the residents and also the maintenance?
You have to reopen the public hearing then.
So let, let's get all your questions.
Yeah.
So then we can then readdress to the applicant.
That was my, I think, my questions. Yeah.
Okay. Nice chair.
You're gonna open the public testimony. I don't have anything else I need to ask.
Okay, so what we need to do now is reopen the public portion of the testimony so that we can address that question of the applicant as a relation. that we can address that question of the applicant, as it relates to the cost of this project being passed on to the residents. Please, yes.
Backed by popular demand. Straight answer to a straight question, there is zero pass through to the tenants, zero. As I stated about five minutes ago, ownership is paying for this project out of his own pocket, which, well, no pass through, but the bigger benefit, not only is there no pass through, there is that rate protection. So as the utility raises its rates and its taxes, residents are protected from those rate increases, like you have at your home, if you don't have solar. I was just approached, off the record, I don't know if you guys noticed, by a concerned resident that showed a meter, put a meter in my face, to explain to me that that wasn't a smart meter. And I thought I pointed this out, the trailer, the, the, the mobile homes themselves do not have a smart meter. They are dumb meters, you know, the old circles that go round and round. The master meter is a smart meter. So that master meter is what is going to get the credit from the solar arrays, therefore protecting every submeter or dumb meter in that mobile home park. So I wanted to address that kind of off the record, because I was kind of, well, I'm on the record now, but in any case, I wanted to share that. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I have one more question. So can they expect their rates to increase in the near future?
No, just normal cost of living increases, no big bumps. No big bumps, nothing that has to do with solar, just cost of living. Well, we'll let you take the, we'll let you take the stand.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so any other questions of the applicant? We're going to close the public testimony again. Back to questions slash comments from commissioners on the project itself. Vice Chair, right?
So the public testimony closed?
Closed.
Okay. All right, this is the I wish project, as far as I'm concerned. There's a lot of things I wish. I wish that HCD had done this the right way at the beginning and turned it over to the city. That would have been great, and then we wouldn't have gone through this. I wish that we wouldn't have been in COVID, and the city would have had everybody there at the beginning, and would have handled this the right way. That would have been very helpful, and you wouldn't have kind of got the runaround from one person to the next person, and that would have been helpful. And then, of course, if we hadn't had COVID, you know, and this whole big mess. I wish the project wouldn't have been built quite as high as it would, and then the people like Mr. Ross over there and all the other people who lived along his street probably wouldn't have had no, wouldn't have had any issue with it. In fact, they probably would have been perfectly fine, and they wouldn't be here right now. That probably would have been great. You know. But it is what it is. I appreciate the fact that the applicant went back and did talk to neighbors, maybe not all of the neighbors. I really wish that you would have got people from the Crest Mobile Home, but obviously, or at least according to you, you tried, so I appreciate that. The thing is, is this, regardless of, and it looks like you did go to the neighborhood council, and it looks like that it was a really mixed bag there, because according to what we have there here, is that it was, it was, you know, kind of either or. But as it comes to us, we have to go by the city design guidelines. And we have to go by the California Environmental Quality Act, and we have to go by the city design guidelines. And that's what we have to go by. We can't go on our feelings, we can't go on what we like and what we don't like. That's not the way this works. And because of that, and the applicant has met the standards, we can't force the applicant to meet, you know, our hopes and dreams necessarily. And as much as I may wish that the applicant had done some other things, I do believe that the applicant has met the standards, as much as I really wish he would have done other things. And I do believe that the landscaper, the trees the applicant, or the landscaper chose, as much as I wish they were bigger, I know that those are pretty fast growing trees. So I'm not concerned about that. And the vines, I'm sure, are going to grow fast enough. I mean, maybe not as fast as, if I lived up against that street, I would wish they would grow faster, but within a year, I'm sure they'll be starting to show up, and I think that'll be okay. If this was not a, if this was not a place to park RVs and stuff like that, it wouldn't be allowed to be this tall. And we wouldn't be having this discussion. And we could deny the project, but unfortunately, it is. So because of that, I can't deny the project. I don't feel in good conscience that, based on illegally, I have any way that I can deny this project. So that's where I stand.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mayer?
Yeah, I'm, I agree with you. I wish, it's a wish list, I wish the trees are taller. I mean, I really believe that, just because what everybody has been through, I believe, I truly believe that the trees can be taller. And I understand the, the amount of cost that is adding up, but it's also adding up to the, for the people that live there, and they're suffering and everything else. So I don't think, I mean, I don't know how big that amount of money is, but I, I, I would want to see that. As far as rent increase, I, we can't control that, but I would prefer if they came to some kind of an agreement, be encouraged to come to some kind of an agreement to, for, for the existing residents to have some kind of a buffer, so that they, or moratorium, or whatever, however you want to call it, so that they can find a place, which is not easy to find, a mobile home place that is affordable, if they can't afford it because of the additional cost. So that's my wish list.
Perfect, thank you very much. Anything else? Okay. So, you know, a couple years back, we were forced to be here, and because of lack of communications, we continued it. And maybe sometimes, like at Thanksgiving, we may be sitting with a family member that we don't like, we forced your hands and said, communicate, go to the, go to the neighborhood council. We did not say go to the neighborhood council and get a positive view. Our, our recommendation was to go before the neighborhood council. It said to talk to the neighbors. It's, you know, certain things that we ask you to do, I think you've done all those items. And in the fact that some of the neighboring neighbors have gone from one side of the fence, so to speak, to another, I think it's a positive outcome. However, I think there's still some challenges that maybe mobile home management, ownership, still needs to have that awkward discussion with some of their tenants. And, and the things that were brought up here were not related to the, to the project per se, but, you know, again, maybe that's something that needs to be happening. You had some success when forced to, and maybe it's time to, you know, look in the mirror and do that same thing again. But as it relates to this project, I think we've all met the conditions, and I appreciate, again, the things that you did as, as we were outlined to do so. So I, that is the it for discussion. May I please have a reading of the resolution?
Resolution number SVPC 08-2023. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Simi Valley approving a modification to a planned development permit PD-S-2021-0007, to install a new solar canopy structure in solar carports at an existing mobile home park located at 1550 Rory Lane, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much. The chair will now entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution approving PDS 2021-0007.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mayer. May I have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, the motion passes. The appeal period for the modifica, no, no, let's go with, we are ready to move forward. Oh, yeah. The appeal period for the modification is 14 calendar days. Let's proceed to the next item and invite Commissioner Mann to come back.
Yep, I'll be right back.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to take a five minute recess?
Let's take a five minute recess at 8:45. All right, we are going to call this meeting back to order. We're going to cover new business, public hearings, S, excuse me, Z-S-2023-0004, City of Simi Valley, to consider city-initiated municipal code amendment Z-S-2023-004, to establish requirements for residential development in response to state housing legislation, SB 9, in residential zoning districts for qualifying residential projects, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act location.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening, Chairman Tulsa, members of the Planning Commission. This is the public hearing to follow up our previous hearings regarding Senate Bill 9, two-unit development projects on single-family properties. And Elizabeth Richardson, our associate planner, will make the presentation. Again, this is to make a recommendation to City Council to establish a permanent ordinance to take over after the interim SB 9 ordinance expires in December. So, Ms. Richardson, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good eve... Sorry. Good evening. Tonight, we will be reviewing an ordinance to amend portions of the municipal code to establish objective design standards in response to SB 9. SB 9 allows property owners to develop a single lot, a single-family lot with up to two primary dwelling units and accessory dwelling units for a total of four units. Using SB 9, properties may also be divided into two individual lots. Though SB 9 limits local agencies' ability to restrict two-unit residential development in urban lot splits, it does allow cities to establish objective zoning, design, and subdivision standards to guide development. The SB 9 law was signed by the governor in September 2021 and was effective January 1st, 2022. In order to have regulations in place before the law was effective, the City Council adopted Urgency Ordinance 1331 on December 20th, 2021, and later, an interim ordinance, 1335, was adopted on January 24th of 2022. For the last year, staff has been using the interim ordinance to review proposed SB 9 developments on lots throughout the city. In preparation of writing the permanent ordinance, staff presented a discussion item to the Planning Commission on April 26, 2023, for guidance on items such as parking, open space, unit size, and expanding existing single-family residences with SB 9 development on the lot. The interim ordinance will expire December 17th, 2023, and this is the first public hearing for the permanent ordinance. To be eligible for SB 9 development, a property must be located in an urbanized area that has a single-family zoning. The property must be located outside the very-high-fire-hazard zone, flood zone, fault zone, and wildlife corridors, unless development is mitigated and approved by the chief building official or the public works director. The existing home cannot be an income-restricted affordable housing unit, and the residence cannot have been rented in the last three years. And finally, no more than 25% of the existing home may be demolished. This is a map of the city showing the areas of the very-high-fire-hazard zones, shown here on the map in red. The wildlife corridor is shown on the map here in green. Flood zones are shown on the map in blue. In purple are the zones of the city where SB 9 development is not allowed. And the Alcois Prairie Fault Zone is on the northern end of the city, is shown here. The portions of the city on the map that are shown in the orange hatch, these are the areas where SB 9 development could be eligible. There are many configurations for residential units that could occur to have SB 9 development on a property. These are two examples. In the first picture, the primary dwelling units are designed as a duplex, and the detached ADUs are located at the rear for a total of four units. In the second scenario, the front primary dwelling unit has an attached J-ADU, and the second primary dwelling unit is detached and located in the rear of the property for making three dwelling units. And this slide shows two possible lot-split scenarios. The first exhibit shows a lot so that each property has direct street access. And the second exhibit shows a lot split where a flag lot is created to provide access to the rear lot. Again, these are just two examples, and there are many other configurations that could be possible to split the lot. The permanent SB 9 ordinance will help the city meet the Housing Element Program 16, which has the objective to maintain sites for all income groups throughout the city. SB 9 will help meet the objective by providing opportunities for moderate-income housing, also called missing-middle housing, and above-moderate-income housing within the city. The proposed permanent ordinance will codify objective zoning, design, and subdivision standards into the municipal code. While a majority of the interim ordinance will become part of the permanent ordinance, modifications were made to parking, open space, unit size, setbacks, and non-conforming structures. To accomplish this, changes will be made to these zoning code sections, including adding a new use type, introducing new development standards and subdivision requirements, adding in a new non-conforming exception, as well as three new definitions. The new two-unit residential development will be allowed in all zones that permit single-family residences. These zones will include open space, residential estate, residential very low, residential low, residential medium, residential moderate, and residential planned development. The permanent ordinance establishes development requirements, including setbacks, building separation, height limits, and parking. Setbacks for development maintain a 20-foot front yard setback. However, state law established a reduced rear and side yard setbacks to four feet for single-story structures. For two-story structures, the ordinance will require a 10-foot side yard setback and 20-foot rear yard setback. Building height for a single-story structure is limited to 18 feet, and a two-story structure is limited to 30 feet. Garage parking will be required for each primary dwelling unit inside an individual one-car garage. At the April 26 Planning Commission meeting, staff asked for direction on zoning requirements for SB 9 development as it related to open space parking, unit size, and additions to non-conforming structures. Changes to these requirements have been incorporated into the permanent ordinance, and in addition to the setbacks for one- and two-story structures, were also modified to be consistent with single-family residential development requirements that are already in the zoning ordinance. A new addition to the ordinance is a requirement for open space. Each primary residential unit will be required to have a 200-square-foot open space that is designed as a continuous space in the shape of a square rectangle or a similar shape. This space must be located outside of the setback. And the exhibit on the screen shows a possible situation where SB 9 development with four residential units could potentially not provide adequate open space. The open space requirement would require usable open space to be incorporated into the site design. Parking requirements were modified to require each primary unit to have an individual, single-car garage. This is a change from the interim ordinance, which allows two primary dwelling units to share a two-car garage. SB 9 development standards added a new unit size maximum for larger lots. The interim ordinance capped the SB 9 unit size to 1,200 square feet for lots over 8,000 square feet. And the Planning Commission discussion on April 26 directed staff to allow a 2,000-square-foot dwelling unit on lots over 20,000 square feet. Setbacks in the permanent ordinance were modified to incorporate larger setbacks for two-story structures. State law established a four-foot rear and side yard setback for single-story structures, and the city's ability to adopt objective design standards allowed us to establish a 10-foot side yard setback and 20-foot rear yard setback for two-story development. When a new SB 9 unit is added to the site developed with an existing single-family residence, both units become two-unit residential development and are restricted to the maximum unit size allowed by the ordinance. To allow existing single-family residences to expand, modifications were made to the non-conforming use section of the municipal code. Section D was modified by adding language that it did not apply to two-unit residential development, and Section E was added to allow existing single-family residences to be expanded when a new SB 9 unit is added to the property. The new language allows homes constructed prior to December 31st, 2021, to still be expanded with no size restrictions. And staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval of Z-S 2023-0004 and a determination the code amendment is exempt from CEQA. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions.
Ms. Richardson, thank you very much, and also for the efforts you did on that last project. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, do we have any questions for staff regarding Z-S dash 2023-004?
I only have a comment. Staff did a great job.
I have a couple of questions, and staff did do a great job. Do we have problems meeting moderate and above-moderate income housing? Like RENA numbers, do we have a problem meeting those numbers?
Usually, that's the easiest category to...
Yeah, that was one of the things they're mentioning. So I just wanted to check, why is that even being mentioned since we don't have a problem meeting those numbers? It's... I'm sorry, I just had to point that out.
Yeah, we... We always need housing to meet those numbers and even go over and above those numbers, that is. And a lot of the... Those numbers are related to accessory dwelling units. It's very similar to an ADU from that respect. HCD should account for SB 9 units equally to S2ADU units. So, a large portion of meeting an RENA is the ADU components that we included in our Certified Housing Element. So SB 9 will just further supplement that.
Thank you. And there's no requirement for any of this to be affordable, right? I know the answer, I'm just asking this.
Right, no, the answer is no. Not in the sense of state affordable housing law.
Yeah.
These SB 9 units do not fall into those state laws. As we would see in multifamily residential projects that will come before you at later dates.
Do HOAs have any jurisdiction over controlling? Like, if you can have an SB 9 unit in an HOA?
SB 9 is silent to HOA control, which is dissimilar from ADU state law. ADU state law specifically says, talks about HOAs. SB 9 law does not. So...
Maybe, that's the answer.
I don't even think the answer is maybe. The answer is that HOAs could potentially restrict SB 9 development, but that's at their discretion.
Okay.
And the city does not enforce HOA rules.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a couple.
Please, Commissioner Mann?
Thank you. If it's in a high or very-high-fire severity zone, do we have any kind of overlay or any kind of idea as to how many houses in Simi are affected by a high or very-high-fire severity zone that would not allow the SB 9 split?
We have not calculated that using our GIS, but that's something that we could do to find out how many houses would be affected by a high-fire hazard zone.
And I should add, that being said, you could still build in on those areas as long as you provide mitigation that is approved by the fire department.
Now, further on down on page three, it says, "If you're in a high or very-high-fire severity zone for the local state, you cannot do it." But further on down, it says, "Properties can be located in the following areas only if certain specified requirements are met." In a very-high-fire severity zone, unless designated to meet very-high-fire construction standards. So, if the house is built to satisfy very-high-fire hazard zone, it can be built, correct?
Right, there's very specific mitigation that they would have to...
But what if it's in a high, but not a very high? It doesn't say anything about if it's in a high, which in my opinion is lower than a very high. It doesn't say it can't be built if it's in a high zone.
The state law specifically calls out very-high-fire hazard areas. It doesn't call out high-fire hazard areas.
So the state law says you can build with standards in a very high, but you can't build with same standards in a high, which is a lesser degree?
No, so, state law says that SB 9 development is not allowed in very-high-fire hazard zones. However, the cities, during the preparation of the interim ordinance, there was discussion that if a housing, if the residential construction met the requirements of the fire department to construct in a very-high-fire hazard area, that restriction could be lifted?
No, that's in a very-high fire. What if this is just in a high-fire zone?
State law only covered very-high fire. So one could say that if it's in a high-fire hazard area zone, it's not restricted by SB 9.
Got it. Next question is, one lot to be owner-occupied for a minimum of three years. How are you going to enforce that? Is there... are there deed restrictions? Is there follow-up? Is there a penalty? Is there just an honor system, that one lot to be owner-occupied for a minimum of three years?
There's affidavits that they'll have to fill out. We, just as a caveat to all of this, we have not yet issued an SB 9, a building permit to build an SB 9 home. We are plan-checking some houses now. And that affidavit that they are stating that they're going to live on the property for three years, that will be a component of their major zoning clearance that they have to turn in as part of the permit.
Further on down, page three, "City also imposed the following requirements: Units over 800 square feet in size are allowed on properties 5,000 square feet or more, where it is an existing lot or a newly SB 9." So what if it's less than 5,000 square feet? If the new lot's less than 5,000 square feet, are they limited in size?
So SB 9 requires that if you do an urban lot split, one lot has, each lot has to be a minimum of 1,200 square feet. And SB 9 state law also says that a city must allow an 800-square-foot SB 9 unit, regardless of that lot size.
So Commissioner Mann, page 21, the draft language says the minimum lot size, the maximum unit size, lots zero to 5,000 square feet is 800 square feet, so that...
Got it, okay. And then over above, got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you very much, okay. Any other questions of staff? Otherwise, they're looking for a recommendation to approve all this so that we can send that to the City Council. I do not. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this behalf? Okay, if there is nobody, then we'll close the public testimony of this hearing. Back to, we're looking for a recommendation to approve these... this ordinance.
Okay.
I just want to say that I really dislike the situation that we're in and that we're forced to vote on. I wanted to be out there, and you all know how I feel about this. I made it very clear, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody want to do a...
You're entertaining a motion.
Entertaining a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution recommending to the City Council approval of Z-S 2023-0004 and the determination that amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Can we have a reading of the resolution from the recording? And then entertain a motion, please.
Resolution number SVPC 09-2023. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Simi Valley recommending to the City Council approval of city-initiated municipal code amendment Z-S dash 2023 dash 0004 to revise portions of Title IX in the Simi Valley municipal code to establish objective design standards for developing two-unit residential developments and establish rules and regulations for subdividing single-family residential properties in response to state Senate Bill 9, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much. We have a first motion by Vice Chair Rice. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a first by Vice Chair Rice and a second by Commissioner Mann. Can we call for a vote?
Is it okay that we did it backwards? Well, I mean...
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Well, I mean, we do have a script, and I'm sorry to be a stickler. We had the reading of the resolution, then you entertained a motion. The Chair basically honored the prior motion prior to the resolution. I think it should be okay. Right.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. The motion passes. Next item, oral communications and reports. Does the staff have anything to report?
Yes, Chairman Tulsa, I'd like to announce that we do have back-to-back Planning Commission meetings this month. So we do have a small agenda for August 23rd, and that's all I have tonight.
Beautiful. Do any commissioners have anything to report? Does staff have anything to report as it relates... Does staff have anything to report as it relates to the Mobile Home Rent Mediation Board?
No specific items.
Tree Advisory Board, does the staff have anything to report?
No, we're still following up on some prior requests on street trees, and we are working on a presentation that we should bring that back to you by September or October.
Fantastic. This concludes the meeting of August 9th, 2023. The next scheduled meeting will be August 23rd, 2023. This meeting is adjourned.